Good afternoon and welcome to our commission meeting today for the eighteenth of September. Yeah, it's an afternoon meeting. It's new for us and a lot of people are more bright eyed right now this time than some of us will be because we're used to getting up at four and five o'clock in the morning. So Terry, would you mind leading us for the pledge of allegiance? All right. Cessor, we have nothing? Okay. Vouchers and invoices.
Okay, so the question I had about Chief three sixty, just to be clear, was how is it different than E dispatches?
The three sixty provides more of a detail and say, for instance, we get a call in Oak Hill, as soon as that call comes into the nine at one center validates, it goes straight to all of our phones, the map location, and then every time one of the dispatchers puts in a note on the tab, it goes straight to our phone. So we're getting info, more detailed info on the calls before we give the prices.
So why would you need both? That that was the thing because we were, I was seeing invoices where people are wanting reimbursement for for both.
Okay, we're not, we're getting away from the dispatch name.
Yeah, see, there's like four different ones and we're all going to go away from them.
And all the chiefs have agreed to that already. And so we have a voucher for E dispatches now. So are they going to be refunding money or that sort of thing? Okay, all right. So and congratulations vouchers and invoices look great. Everything looked great. So I move that we approve vouchers and invoices, including Chief three sixty.
Second. Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye. And motion pay, approve payroll, September nineteenth.
Second. Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye. Um, I'm going to need to postpone this because I had a couple of questions. I I was remembering differently than what the minutes said, so I'm going to go over those with Elizabeth and we'll have them on the meeting next time. Okay?
Okay, so that'll be postponed until October first?
It postponed October first.
Second. Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. State settlements?
I'm moved to approve state settlements.
Second. Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey Ruth.
Ms. Ruth?
So the first item was a letter for Ms. Patricia Kobs. And Ms. Kobs is turning ninety and her family had asked that we send her something to acknowledge that and her service to our community and service to our country. So I'm very pleased to make a motion that we send a letter honoring that.
Second. Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor? Aye. And anytime that a citizen of the county would like for us to send a letter for someone that's hitting milestones like ninety up through a hundred or four more.
That's not banned. Yes.
I would, we would be happy to do that.
Well, we print one that's not banned.
Okay.
It's banned.
All right.
I don't want to give her a letter. We have nicer paper. Let me put on nicer.
Nine one one center. This is Philip and Concha's request.
I have some white paper at home.
We do. Yeah, we do. Yeah, we got this. We've got this. Carolina Recording Center.
Yeah. Yeah. So what this is, is where Motorola is updating their Astro twenty-five system, which is a radio, of course. The recorder, Carolina Recording, where they're our vendor for that, they require a subsequent license through Motorola to allow us to basically connect to the radio equipment for direct recording. And that's our license fee for that. And this could be one time from here on out, or it could be, you know, again, in two years, five years, or it depends on when they do the next Astro twenty-five upgrade on the radio system.
When did it last?
Probably about five years ago, I think.
They're pretty consistent. About every five years they come up with an upgrade.
No, it's, it actually varies. Actually, before that, it was probably eight years or better. But and I don't know if they're going to do them more consistent, less consistent. I really don't know on the plan for that. But for our recorder, if they are required that license, of course, that falls on us to cover that, which we have to have.
What's the bottom line on this?
The what?
The bottom line is that the eighteen nine ninety?
Yeah.
I think the main question is which, what's funded?
Okay, but we need a date corrected contract. This is done from twelve three twenty-four.
Right, right. And I actually brought this, Vicki, that wrote this up because all of this was supposed to happen months ago and it got held up because of the upgrades. So now I can get those, get things together, but I'll just have her change the days because this is a quote. I'll just have her do the invoice with a corrected date. But the price isn't going to change. She's already told me that. It's not changing at all.
I move that we approve though.
Second. Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Because.
Number three.
This is Elizabeth.
Julie.
Twenty-six.
This is the energy grant.
Okay, energy. Okay, um.
There's the jail.
We are.
That's the jail study first, right?
So this one basically can be, there'd be an administrative note or we can ratify it in order to get the grants for the jail redevelopment consultant. We had to complete a W nine. We had to do that with an electronic signature. So we went ahead and did that. But we just need to, you know, before approval on that or make a note of it or ratify it. We can't get the funds dispersed until we submit that. And so we did that on the fourth.
And it's just, it's one of those historic thing. It's just another step in looking at the jail before you decide what you're really with it.
Yeah, seventy-five hundred dollars.
All right. So I move that we approve the jail study.
Second. Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, now we're at energy.
Energy.
Henry. So for this one, we are looking at getting all the light bulbs redone in the courthouse from fluorescent LED. And we put that out for bid. We only got one bid. We did get some interest from someone out of state. And that bid came in at thirty-four, six thirty-six, seventy-six from Childers, but the grant amount is only twenty-nine, seven thirty-six oh six. So we would need to get your approval to cover the difference of four thousand nine hundred and nine hundred dollars and seventy cents.
I move that we approve that difference.
I think LED would be the better way to go. I expect in the motion.
Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Courthouse improvement.
So I know you guys are familiar with this. We do one every year. So this year, basically, this is a letter of support for it that we need from everyone. We need three to five letters. We need one from you guys that agrees that you will do the cash match for it. At this point, we're looking at, and I'm going to read from this because it's a little beyond my, they, all the structural things are a little beyond my memory here. So the project we're looking at is stabilizing and restoring the mid-century addition to the courthouse, which includes fixing rusted steel lintels, shifting coping stones, and failing flashing and mortar joints. And that's what we're going to ask the CFI to fund for us this year. We did get a quote in. We had Carol from CAS review everything. And then Cody at Keystone provided a cost estimate of a hundred and nineteen thousand, which falls within our, we would be looking at a hundred and twenty. They would provide a hundred thousand and then you guys would put in the rest or approve putting in the rest.
And this is like the circuit part, that part.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I move that we approve the match.
Second. Got a motion second floor. All those in favor?
Thank you.
David.
EMPG grant. This is, this is for twenty twenty-three. It's forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. They're a couple of years behind. This is a reimbursement grant for emergency management.
So we're just approving the award?
Yes, we're accepting it basically.
I move that we accept the EMPG twenty-three grant award of forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Second. Got a motion second floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, our lawyer in the opioid settlement case, Mike Wolfle, has recommended that we approve the settlement document that we were provided in our our packet. You have any concerns?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we approve the settlement document. One of the, Commissioner Bramon sign it.
Second. Got a motion second floor. All those in favor?
Aye. We've got a support letter for the black line legislation.
Taking a support letter. It just turned it in for a support letter. Oh, okay. Well.
You didn't see mine.
I didn't see that one. But I can't print a letter ahead. She'll have to print it for us.
Okay, well, we can sign it.
Yeah, if y'all are good with it.
So I move we approve the support letter when we all had chimed in on it already.
I second the motion.
Got a motion second floor. All those in favor?
Aye. Um, so the National Park Service.
Yeah, so they want you to sign support letters for them acquiring land. I don't know if you guys want to look further into it. I don't know if it's PAX now. One of the parcels is like estate property. The other one, it's not clear. Um, but it's, if you read it, it is, I sent both of these to you like a week ago. I think one of them is for, what do you call it? Is it Fern Creek, I think, where the park, there's enough parking?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with it? Would you like to comment on it? Where it exists? For the park services wanting to purchase it.
Yeah.
With that.
Yeah.
It says it's within their authority to acquire.
Yeah, they'll do eminent domain.
But they have to have a support letter from the commissioner. You guys have to agree with it. There's a math of both mountains.
And do you have any comment on this? You know, you know Fayette County like the back of your hand.
Yeah, I, I'm going to want to discuss that exactly.
Now, I agree. I think we should postpone.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe let's just postpone it before we, I, I'd like the lawyers to be able to dig into that a little bit more. I feel like there's got to be, I'm not even sure what they want us to agree to. And then if it's agreed for them to take action against a Fayette County citizen and seize their land, I want to know what more about that.
Yes, yes, definitely. I've heard.
That's kind of what it sounds like, but.
Well, we changed responsive and everything. Yeah, because normally the sheriff's department responds to that area. Not having trails or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. It's just, I mean, as the acting superintendent here.
So we want to postpone it.
Yeah, the acting superintendent needs to, or his lawyer or somebody.
Someone needs to exclude you.
The last, the last item.
Move to postpone, sorry.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Got a motion second floor. All those in favor?
Aye. Yeah.
And then last item, we have a PAX representative here to do that.
Who would that be?
Official, I'm getting paid from the county. State officials clocked out. I stopped out, making.
Angela Pax is in Fayette County also.
I know, but I appear on behalf of the town pack. So guys graciously gave the town of Pax some Arfa funds. Eighty thousand of it was for our community center to do some windows, an HVAC, and we're hoping to add on bathrooms. And then twenty thousand was to pay. Unfortunately, when we did our bids for our pavings, the low bid was forty-five thousand. I do have pictures of our parking lot. It is a little rough. So I'm asking if we can uptake twenty-five thousand for marketing ready center and put in the twenty thousand for that.
You're not asking for any more plans?
More, but because it was three separate line items, I just want to make sure that our council voted that they were okay with, but we have to get your guys since it's a budget item in Arfa, so.
Do you have any objections to that, Ruth?
I don't. I move that we approve the reallocation.
I second. Got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, back on the clock.
Out of here.
She's off the block.
Right. Uh, it is four fifteen. We are on schedule. Um, Sheriff, no, we're, that's not going to be on there, is it?
No. The publicist is on and then the, um.
Sorry.
And the reimbursement.
So we publish in the newspaper every year. We have a few of those twenty-three tickets that we have requested permission to own span and publish. They weren't paid. So they're on here as well. So this, yeah, I was, this is, this is not it.
Okay. And then you had the counterfeit bill reimbursement request. So I move that we reimburse that hundred dollars.
A second.
That's so. I have a virtual copy of that letter for each of you.
And the, and the, the hundred dollar bill has been turned over to the sheriff to pull. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have motion second floor. All those in favor?
And then move to postpone the policy discussion at the sheriff's request to the next meeting.
Second. Got a motion second floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, Becky and Lisa show. I'm Becky and Lisa.
Good to see you both.
Sorry, it was a little bit later than normally the new hits.
Well, it's a good thing you work if they're later than usually what we do.
Really like the old chapstick. I love my business. Oh, I can use this.
Yeah, for all those glasses of yours.
Is that what it is? I thought it was mouse. I would put up here.
Or screen cleaner, glass cleaner. Thank you. I'm Becky with the New River Gorge CBB. Also, we cover Fayette County. We're just called the New River Gorge CBB. Um, I know we're all familiar, but offices in Oak Hill, on Euler Avenue. We share our office, staff and volunteers with the Chamber of Commerce and we do Bridge Day, which is thirty days away exactly from today.
So thank you for being here.
Are you married?
Dave?
No.
No, she's just overworked. You know, she does.
It happens every year. Um, the CBB itself is funded on a portion of the hotel, hotel occupancy tax that's collected in Fayette County, the city of Oak Hill and the town of Amstead. The town of Fayetteville has their own CBB. Um, the annual report, my highlights for Fayette County CBB is the visitor center itself had a twelve percent increase in visitors from forty-six states and nine countries last year. Our top states for visitation are West Virginia, Ohio, Pennsylvania, North Carolina, Virginia, and Florida. Top countries are Canada, France, Germany, Switzerland, and the Netherlands. Uh, the top three interests, we try to collect all this data when they come in. They sign a sheet giving us their zip code and then we track on their sheet what they're asking about when they come in. So their top interests were events and Bridge Day, state and national park information, and the bridge. CBB itself spent seventy-four percent of the budget on marketing, the New River Gorge region, and this does include promotional efforts, social media, websites, brochures, postage, partnerships, and special event marketing. One thousand six hundred and fifty-five jobs are supported by tourism in Fayette County. Hundred and seventy, one hundred and seventy point six million dollars are travel generated spending in Fayette County. Our visitor guide request, which is in your bag, those requests increased by twenty-six percent last year. Our partner clicks, which is an awesome number to watch for, like our lodging properties. If somebody visits our website and then they click to a hotel or Airbnb or whatever, those increased by a hundred and fifty-eight percent last year. Our website's lodging page increased by ten percent and the guide request page is up a hundred and forty-three percent. Um, I do have national park numbers. I don't know if you want to get into all that, but you know, they reported one point eight million visitors in twenty twenty-four.
Is that all three of the parks combined, the Blue Stone, the?
That's just New River Gorge, National Park.
That's not Golly and that's not Blue Stone.
Right.
Okay.
Right. That does include like Piggy Rim, Thurman, Grand View. Yeah. Um, so with the majority of those visitors coming in the months of, in, in this order, July, August, June, and October are our top months for visitation. Um, so currently, right now, where we're at this year compared to last year, they are reporting one point three million visitors and that's at the end of August, uh, which is five percent over what we had last year at this time. And those are national park numbers. And Lisa.
All right, thanks. So, yeah, this.
Sure. I'm going to give you all this stuff here. Um, so I, I've had a weekly email to you guys for, for like forever goes and I'm going to do you again. So this is our annual report and our latest audit, which you don't have because it's relevant.
And I'm sure. I read about this. Yeah, I was really proud of this.
Yeah, so we have our new motorcycle guide, um, which New River TV was nice to give us a cover. Uh, that is. So as a CBB, obviously, we do a lot of very similar things. But the biggest part of what we do is what you went by working with, we're able to share our assets and get the information about Fayette County and Southern West Virginia out further. Some of the things that we have partnered on is a photo B-roll, very expensive to shoot, very, to get professional quality. We share the cost of those things. We utilize all of the role in those, in our cooperative advertising, and I said, which includes Fayette County, Oak Hill. We have a little bit of everything in there. Um, we utilize this partnership with cooperative advertising. So Becky were to do a cooperative advertising with the, with the state, it's a fifty fifty match. But if she does it with us, it's a twenty-five seventy-five match, and that means we're paying twelve and a half percent to each. So we go, she goes from that fifty percent match down to that twelve and a half, which makes all of our advertising dollars go so much further and gives our reach, gets our reach out even more. Uh, we do have the, the landing page on our website and we do fill all the requests. So we pick up the postage for that. And we also do all the shipping of both of our guides to all the welcome centers and part, yeah, what is it? Welcome Center, what the other one's called, Travel Plazas. The new Travel Plazas are a bit different. They did not build in at Brasher Rex. So we are very limited on those. But we still have our visitor center inside of Tamrec, uh, which we push tons of brochures through every year. We distribute about a half million brochures a year. Uh, we do represent Fayette County at group trip tour shows and international travel buyer shows. And then we invest in a lot of data. We invest in STR, which is your hotel data, key data, which is your third-party rental data, and DataFi, which is traveler data, which tracks them by their smartphones, credit cards, et cetera. Um, for those, it's, it's very interesting. We, this is something new that we did this last year. We put a pixel on our website so we can see people who have been on our website who actually showed up in our, in our area. Um, and we can directly attribute over two million dollars of business directly to our website from that advertising. And we also, something new for this year is we did a passport from this, the New River Gorge, Beckley and beyond. There's been two thousand three hundred and ninety-one check-ins in Fayette County. Um, we also did the Fruze and Booze Trail, which includes, I think, if that county just bridge through. Um, and we will do the other six counties. I just haven't been released yet. We're getting ready to release the next.
Why didn't it look good?
Because they, they, they just will not join. We are a membership organization, which is a little different than when you cover nine counties. It's almost like you have to, so. So we have seen a change in occupancy. We have an, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three, we saw growth in our, the rate in our hotels and motels. Um, the, the what we do subscribe to is Raleigh Fayette. So we just, you can just use these as trending data. Um, we sit seeing a three percent increase year over year in twenty-two and twenty-three. In twenty-four, we did see that decline just a little bit. It's a little bit more flat. And this year we are seeing about a three percent decline in the hotel motels. The one thing I will say, we did have a new hotel come on board. That, so it does change. When something closes and something opens, it does, it's sometimes you're not comparing apples to apples, but the average daily rate has continued to increase every year. So the money has not really been affected that much, even when the years were at declines. Um, our third-party rental data, we're still showing over five hundred Airbnb's, five hundred third-party rentals listed on Airbnb for Fayette County. Um, there's an additional two hundred and eighty-seven on Verbo. So that's the only two platforms that I have access to. Um, most of the people on Verbo, though, are also on Airbnb, so I would not add those together. I would, I would feel comfortable saying there's between five hundred and five hundred and like twenty-five or thirty that are showing up on those two platforms. Obviously, there are people that use other platforms or don't use those platforms at all. But that gives us a good idea. For twenty twenty-five, we have seen that as it's flat as well. It has not declined in Fayette County, but it is flat. The, the occupancy has not increased. But the average daily rate is up fifteen percent. So they're charging fifteen percent more, but the actual, the actual occupancy is flat. And yeah, so if y'all have any questions for me, I do have some further information. I did print out a destination summary for Fayette County from our DataFi. That kind of shows exactly what Becky was telling you. The year is the year when, when you're up and when you're down. It's, um, it also shows your points of interest. And this is again trending data. This only picks up the people who are using their smartphones in different areas. Uh, we did upgrade our DataFi for the next year that we're going to include all visitor spending. This was just my super hard. Um, but we're going to do all the credit cards, uh, starting next year. So you're welcome to look at any of this. You know, what we're seeing as far as the shared visitors day from out of state, Pittsburgh is our largest market. Um, Roanoke, Cleveland, Columbus, no big surprises in any of these, Charlotte, Raleigh, Greensboro, DC, Cincinnati. And then you get into the Charleston Huntington area in by order. There was also the top spending destinations in state is still your top spending, then Pittsburgh, Charlotte. And you can see some of these because it is important to know where people are spending. If we get the people who are spending more when they come here, that's a good thing. Uh, so we can see the increase in that. And then you can also see where they, where they're traveling to while they're in market. You can see if they showed up at this place and then that place. Um, the one thing interesting about being a regional CBB, we do have data to show that so many people that show up in one market also show up in the other. So if I base it strictly on Fayette County, it's, um, well, I did this. It was like thirty-nine percent of the people who show up in Fayette County, I'm sorry, Raleigh County. Um, twenty percent of those also are in Mercer County, twenty percent of about eighteen on Fayette County and Greenbrier County. So basically what this is saying, it's not that that's the only numbers that come to your county, but these are the same exact self-ones that showed up in every single county that we have, and it literally covers all nine of them. So when people come here, they don't just come to one place. They explore. And that's what we want because that means they'll stay longer. That, that was a lot. Does anybody have any questions? And I also did bring, when people do the passports, um, we do send out prizes. We have stickers. This is our poster. There's a T-shirt. I just brought you some examples of that. And that kind of shows you where they've checked in at as well.
Tell them about your situation with the baseball team. Oh, okay. Well, it kind of ties in because I do have a question for you. Yeah, we, we hosted tournaments back in the, a little while ago, a couple of months ago. We have some tournaments in this county. And we had twenty-three teams come in one. We had twelve teams come in and won. We had another tournament with twelve teams. This is Little League twelve and under. Basically, we, we all do tournaments. And most teams stayed in Raleigh County. Now, this leads, we had one team, we had one team that played in Oak Hill. And we did all the tournament work and we did all the thing. And they stayed a week and their, their hotel bill was eighteen thousand dollars for one week. Eighteen thousand dollars. And we want to do more of this in Fayette County. But this, thank you, John, for bringing that up because this is the question I'm going to ask you. Your numbers, and these are your numbers right here in your brochure that you print up. Fayette County, a hundred and seventy point six million dollars. Greenbrier County, three hundred and ninety-nine point six million dollars. What is Greenbrier County doing that we're not? Because we're working our tail off. Okay.
And it's expensive.
So it's hotel.
Okay.
So that's.
Well, yeah, because we only have two.
But it's hotel.
If you look at the bottom, that is numbers at the bottom of the percentages, that's how that total number is broken down.
Then we get down to Raleigh County, three hundred and thirteen million. What do we need to do in Fayette County to compare to these? Because if you look at the front of this, is that not the New River?
Yeah, that's Sam's fault.
In what county?
Rollins. Oh, Summers.
Summers.
It's in Raleigh.
Is it Raleigh?
It's on this side of the Summers County.
Oh, wow.
Summers County claims it. It's Summers.
But. But, but that's Summers County, and Summers, well, that's Raleigh County, right off Summers County, Summers County rolls in at thirty million, one, one hundred thousand dollars. See, uh, here's my thought, what are we doing that we need, we need to do something more?
I'll be honest with you, it's a hundred percent the lock-in, we have, you pull off the exit forty-four, and look how many hotels are there. That is where that visitor spend is in, so Raleigh County is in the center of, uh, this, this area, so you do have a lot of people who lodge there, like you said, you have these people come in, and they lodge there. Um, and I, that, I will say, that is the difference, it's the number of hotel rooms in Raleigh County versus the hot, number of hotel rooms in the other counties.
Like you have those little league teams that they wanna all stay together, they need twenty rooms, or they need thirty rooms, and then, and we only have a limited number of people that can accommodate that.
And we're appreciative of the Raleigh County area that is able to provide those rooms, I think Country End and Suites is where this team that we, we just polled that team, we said, hey, where'd you stay, where'd you stay, and they told us. And I mean, that was very interesting, and where they did, Fayette County gained very little. We have one right beside you that's not open. It needs to be open, now, is there something we can do to help that? I don't know.
I mean, and I, and the business would be there if you would open it, and one thing I will say, just, just for future reference, if you ever, when, if you guys do this again, this tournaments. Um, is that we do have a girl in our office that will work out rates with the hotels, for these tournaments, we do it for the soccer tournament, we've done it for other people who bring in things, we'll call and. Get a block of rooms and get us a special rate, um, if at all possible, I mean, sometimes if it's peak season, they may not work with us as well, but they're pretty good about youth groups. If we let them know in advance.
And we've got our partners, the North Nicholas County, they're at forty-one million, I mean, and they, they can benefit from this too, they got Summersville Lake. We, we, we try to, we try to market, we do Little League, we market the area, not the specific county, however, and that's my role with Little League, but my role as county commissioner, I wanna market Fayette County.
Absolutely, and you know, a lot of this traffic is in Fayette County, I mean, that's proof in the park numbers, um, and you know, if you look at the, you know, Canyon Rim is the, is the largest, um, benefactor of like visitors, that's where, that's where people go. Um, it's just, there was not, again, I think it really boils down to, um, you know, the number of hotel rooms, uh, that you're looking at getting off that, and, you know, even though, uh, the Fayette County is one hundred percent a destination. Uh, you do, you do have the factor that in, and like I said, you got your Airbnbs, not everybody wants to stay in a, a third-party rental, but you're looking at a fifteen percent increase, um, in the nightly rates. Uh, so, you know, I don't know, I mean, I, I think that trend may, I keep saying that trend is gonna bottom out, but I don't know when that's gonna happen, and I don't want it to go away, we need it. Um, but, you know, just level off so that people can find, uh, places to live and employees, but, um, yeah.
We hope it doesn't level off, and I don't, I don't think so, I, I don't think that our, we've reached the peak of anything in our area, I don't think we've reached peak of visitors, I don't think we've reached peak of hotels. I don't think we've reached peak of anything, I think we're on the, uh, the verge of, of exploding to a bigger and better market.
We're definitely on the, on the increase with visitation and all that, I think I just, I just meant like third-party rentals, because, um, you know, unfortunately, it's making it hard for people to find, uh, homes and, um. Places for employees.
And Airbnbs, I got nothing against Airbnbs, but when I travel, I don't, I don't choose Airbnbs, I don't, I like hotel room. I, I just, I just like the hotel room, but there are applications where Airbnbs are good. That's what we seem to have a lot of.
You, you know, in Fayette County, you, you need, you do need them, because you, there are limited hotel rooms, so that number would be even less if you did not have these third-party rentals, I mean, they're a very, very important component. Of, um, the, the visitor experience coming into the park, I mean, obviously, we have cabins, and you know, and things like that, especially at some of the resorts. Um, and some of the cabin cabins, but at the end of the day, you know, you're bringing in a couple of million people a year, they need somewhere to stay. Um, uh, they just, they play a very important, very important role in terms of in Southern West Virginia, and most definitely in Fayette County. We have about a quarter of them in Raleigh County.
I think where we increased a few years ago, it's due to money that was sent out by the government. People use that to vacation on, now that money isn't available. Uh, so they're using their own dime to go out and visit, do things, and that's why I think we're gonna continue to see a downward trend for a little bit, and then it's gonna pick back up.
And I mean, if you look at national travel trends, if you, we, we get a lot of newsletter about national travel trends, there's some, there's, there's people that are. There's areas that are definitely suffering more than we are, I do feel like when the, when it comes to people looking for vacations that are drivable, West Virginia always wins. Um, so we just need to keep a, you know, a presence out of them, um, you know, outside, out of mind, so that's what Becky and I are here for, is to keep it in their face and on their mind.
I like your little design here, and I, I see some things on the design that maybe you may intended, or you didn't know you intended, of course, Tamrac, that's Tamrac's design up the top, and then you've got Summersville Lake, don't you? That Summersville Lake, the rocks that are very, and then you have the New River Gorge Bridge with the logo of the, of the river, which takes care of Summers and Fayette County, because the river does go through all of those.
Yeah.
And Raleigh.
Yeah, so that sticker goes with our, um, so the first passport that we did that I said we had two thousand three hundred ninety-one, we had more pad, but that was in Fayette County, you can see where they all checked in. Um, then we, they got prizes for that, and the prizes, so that sticker is a representation of that passport. Uh, there's different prizes that go with our, um, our one that's the Spirit Trail, and, uh, then we have a, um, a, a second passport that's gonna come out sooner, it'll be three different counties, so that whole design will be different. Um, it's been very successful, uh, we, we're spending a lot of money sending out stuff, people really wanna earn that t-shirt, uh, but it's been a lot of fun, and it gives us a lot of data. We can tell where every single person checked in there, where they were from. Um, we've had people walk into our office, we had a group from England come in, and they had done the passport, and they wanted to know if there was anywhere they could just pick up their prizes, which we do have some in the hat, we were able to do it, but, um. Uh, you know, they did, they weren't sure we'd mail it, which we would have, but, uh, yeah, so it's been, it's been fun, and, and, and it does give us a lot of really good data, um, because our marketing is always good, it's the data we have to put behind it.
Here we think.
And your numbers were one point three million by, in August, by the time we've gotten to August of this year, we're at one. Yeah, it's a, it's, it's a national park, we're at one point three million to date of August, the end of August, okay.
Yeah, so you have. Nation in October, because October is one of their busiest months.
Bridge Day.
Canyon Rim, yeah, so Canyon Rim will get over two hundred, three hundred thousand visitors on Bridge Day weekend, um, so numbers will go up, and so right now, where we're at, we're five percent up.
We're five percent over last year.
And this is not a national trend, some of the national parks go down, I mean, even our kind of, I know it's a different historical part, but Harper's Berry's numbers, I understand, are. Flat are down, but the New River Gorge is, is continuing to go up.
And like this is, um, New River Gorge National Park numbers from nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand twenty-four, and like what John was saying just now about the money and the COVID and all that. In twenty twenty-one, visitation went up fifty-nine percent. And since then, it's been. Seven, six, eight, five percent.
Well, anyway, we did, COVID brought a lot of people to the.
And the designation.
And the designation, the newness of it, but we expected a drop after COVID in all national parks, not just ours. But you're saying we're still holding steady?
Yes.
To a, 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 a great aggression.
Not as big as what we were, but we are still growing.
Okay, that's encouraging.
It's very encouraging, yeah.
All right, well, thank you ladies, we appreciate it, is there anything we can do for you?
Just let us know if there's anything that's going on that we need to know.
Watch out for the scene.
I know you are.
And again, if y'all ever need any of this data, reach out, but it does a lot more than, um, than, than, you know, if you're ever, especially when people are looking for feasibility studies and stuff like that, I know that we get a lot of those called, but if you ever need anything like that, you know, we'd be happy to pull it.
And like she was saying about our partnership, like. We partner together, we get to use like her systems, so she's paying a lot of money for these software, Datify, and Key Data, so we get, we get access to that, because we are a partner. Um, we share our advertising costs all the time, and there's a map in there that we did a partnership with, uh, it's got Southern West Virginia on one side and Fayette County on the other side. Um, so, yeah, I mean, we shared the printing costs, we shared the creation of it, so all the things, so the partnership works out wonderful, it's great.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it.
We do, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
We too.
All right, um, four forty-five.
It's my understanding that we probably have more to discuss before we deal with this.
Okay.
This one.
So, let's.
Is this for the shooting range, or is this which?
No.
Okay, it's, it was the other one, yeah, we definitely have.
Oh, yeah, I was confused when y'all said it wasn't, I thought that one. I know what you're saying, now, now I agree with Allison.
I'm gonna move that we postpone it, or that we remove this, um, and we'll put it back on when we're ready.
Yeah, when we're ready, I'll second the motion.
Motion second on four, all those in favor? Aye.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Oh, yes.